Hello, Jen.
Hello.
Is it just Ken and I that are live today?
Well, it kind of appears that way. I have Dr. Aldridge on Zoom so far, so I don't know if everyone's just kind of slow.
But we've got the most important people, and that's...
Senator, this is Michelle. Can you hear me?
I can, yep.
Robin and the mayor, of course. Those are the... Too early. He's retired.
Michelle, I'm sorry. Can you hear us now?
Okay, Verizon time is showing 12 o'clock. Present on the dais is myself and Councilman Escobal. We'll be hearing from Treasurer Robin Lockman and Mayor Collins on their overview for this year's budget. And Jen, may I ask, who do we have online?
So far, I just see Dr. Aldridge.
Oh. Disappointing that there's only three of us present, but we'll go ahead and move forward. And with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, I would like to make just a couple of personal comments. One is that I had a chance to meet with all of our department heads and most of our outside agencies and your department directors. They came to these meetings very well-prepared. They know their budgets really well. And what I was really pleased about is when I asked about the future, as I shared with you in some of the notes that I sent about these meetings, they really understand where their departments are going, what their needs are going to be for the future. The other thing I would tell you is, your treasurer, Ms. Lockman, I can't imagine doing this without her. She's amazing as far as knowing the numbers and guiding us through this. So while it might be the mayor's budget proposal, believe me, it's a team effort, and they did a great job. So I just can get right into our testimony here. The mayor's budget proposal for the fiscal year 2023 is now finished and before you. And as I said earlier, I've enjoyed this process of meeting with our departments to hear their wants and needs. As you are aware, the revenue uncertainty in the future has made this budget a real challenge. Compounding the situation is inflationary pressures that have made the existing light items we already have in our current budget more expensive. Last year, we talked about the fact that our budget should be, our ongoing expenses should be paid for with reoccurring revenues. And for the most part, that's exactly what we've done. Our ongoing expenses are paid for with reoccurring revenues. We started the budget with the realization that inflation and actions taken by the city council in this past year have caused expenses to exceed our predicted revenues by over $2 million. Examples of these increases include the cost of property and liability insurance, fleet and fuel in our fleet maintenance department, our light fuel and power bill, computer software and maintenance. We took on animal control. Our jail costs, even stuff like ammunition for our police department, have all gone up significantly. And then the council, we took the action to raise salaries and add back longevity. Those added to the expenses. And then we reduced our revenues with resolutions to fund our community recreation and events from lottery proceeds, and we moved positions from the O and M fund back to the general fund. Those all also added to the calculus of reducing our revenues. Our police department is also fully staffed for the first time in many years. It was a sobering moment when Robin informed me that we had work to do to balance the budget and that my goals of adding needed staff positions would not be possible this year. But I don't regret most of the decisions we made during the past year, so we'll move forward. Last year, we anticipated a slight slowdown in sales tax revenues, but consumer spending remained steady, and the oil and gas industry really took off. The revenue allowed for some of the decisions we made last year. That's good. We were fortunate to receive many pieces of good news, though, in regards to revenues while we're working through this process. The first one was the state didn't cut our special distribution as we feared. In fact, they increased it by $448,000. A nice surprise. Next, we had a placeholder for health insurance of 10% increase. As we now know, Blue Cross gave us a 0% increase for the second straight year, kind of unheard of, I think. And this saved us $660,000. And with our decision to go self-insured, those savings remain. The recent phenomenon of historic horse racing has galloped to help our budget. We anticipate new locations will add $626,000 to our revenues next fiscal year. The last big mover in revenues is related to the sale of electricity. We anticipate some data centers will come online at the end of 2023. This will have a very positive impact on revenues in both the franchise fees and sales tax collected. I'm still concerned with what will happen with revenues during the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, with inflationary pressures on our economy, combined with supply chain shortages. My concern is what will happen to consumer spending. Sales taxes represent 36.9% of our budget, and a slowdown in spending would hurt our revenues. Our sales tax revenue number is $3.25 million, larger than last year's budget, but smaller than we actually collected by about $1.5 million. No one knows what's going to actually happen next year, but I suspect an economic slowdown is headed our way sometime after the elections in November. So our revenue projection for the fiscal year 2023 is $59,636,705. That amount is $5,743,486,000 higher than our last proposed budget. So what's driving our revenues? Sales and use taxes are projected at 36.9% of our budget. Property taxes are 11.3%. Gas and electric franchise fees are 8.6%. The special distribution from the state will be 7.6% of our revenues. Federal mineral royalties are 4.6%. Building permits, our activity is good, will be at 4.2%. Severance taxes are 3.7%. Vehicle taxes are 2.7%. The gas tax will pay 2.6% of our revenues. Historic horse racing is up to 1.9% of our budget. And then miscellaneous revenues, leases and rentals are at 1.4%. And we get some money from the solid waste at 1.2%. Nothing else adds more than 1% to our revenues. And four categories showed increases over last year's budget. Sales taxes are up. Gas franchise fees are up. Gas and electric franchise fees. Solid waste transfer and historic racing all increased. This year, we'll also see benefits from the new fee schedule that we have for our planning department. They went from about 2% to 24% of the total coverage of the cost of our planning department with a fee schedule that we changed here just a couple of months ago. I found it interesting when I read Robin's budget report how our sales taxes and property taxes are determined. Sales taxes, again, are our number-one revenue source, and it's going to be projected at $22 million for fiscal year 2023. So for every $1,000 of taxable sales made in Laramie County, the city's general fund gets $7.71, not a very large percentage. So let's use an example of a person buying a car at $50,000. So the person would pay $3,000 in sales tax on that vehicle. The city in our general fund would get $385. So if we were to look at an average firefighter's salary and benefits, it would take $16,448,898 in taxable sales to pay for one firefighter for a year. If we have 91 firefighters, though, so if we add it up, it would take almost $1.5 billion in taxable sales just to pay for the salaries in our fire department. I can tell you, that's a lot of bicycles. Our number-two revenue source is property taxes. It's going to come in at $6.7 million for our next fiscal year. In Laramie County, we collect 72.34 mills of property taxes, and the city gets eight of those mills. It's about 11% of the property taxes collected goes to the city. If we use an average home valued this year at $400,000, the general fund would receive $304 per year in property taxes, about $25.33 a month. So if we take our average firefighter again, it would take 417 homes to pay for one firefighter for one year in property taxes. But again, we have 91 of those firefighters, so it would take 337,963 homes, single-family homes, to cover the salaries and benefits to pay our firefighter team. That's more single-family homes than we have in Cheyenne. On the expense side, we're projecting the same amount of $59,000 or $59,600,000 in expenses. And as we discussed, much of the increases are due to the inflationary reasons and discussions, decisions that we made last year. So how do we spend our money? Surprisingly, it's about the same as we did last year. Payroll and benefits are 73.4% of our total expenses. Fleet and parts, fuel are at 4%. We pay 3.9% of our expenses, go to pay our light and gas bill. Our outside agencies that we support are at 3.7%. Professional services are 2.34%. Our property and liability insurances is up to 1.72% of our budget. Supplies are 1.6%. Computer software maintenance is 1.6%. Maintenance of our facilities, maintenance in general, 1.2%. Our bond payment is at 1.07%, and the jail cost is just under 1% at 0.95%. Most of our percentages of expenses are about the same as they were last year, but the gross dollars that we're expending are up by $5.7 million going into next year. So this budget adds a couple of new positions and restores another one. The city's taken on responsibility for the trees downtown, and we've added significant open space during the recent past. And arborist is needed to keep up with the number of trees we're responsible for. This will restore two lost positions the department has over the last couple of years due to the pandemic and the economic slowdown. This position, I would suggest, would be paid for using part of the lottery money that we gave CRE last year. The total cost would be $76,000, and that would leave about $2.5 million or $250,000 a year to CRE to fund their deferred maintenance programs. This was an action we took as a city council to take those lottery funds, and CRE management is in support of this decision. With the growth of the city, our engineering, planning, and building departments are going to be needing some extra help to keep up with what the building department or the building community is doing in a timely manner. And quite frankly, they pay their fees in order to get that customer service. Last year, we earmarked a building permit to fund the cost of additional building inspectors. The two positions we added helped the department keep up with the increased inspection demand our growth has required. It's my intention to earmark more of the next big building permit to continue to fund these positions and add an additional building official. Bruce Trembath, our chief building official, his projection is that we'll need more help this fiscal year. And also, it's part of my effort to provide a succession plan for the department. Finding professionals trained in the trades is so difficult, as we all know, and we need to build the depth to make sure we meet the building community's expectations. And again, their fees make up 4.2% of our budget, and again, this won't come from our general fund. We'll pay for it out of the building permits that we hold aside. Engineering is another area that touches our most of our aspects of growth. We need depth in the engineering department to review subdivisions, drainage plans, plats, and all the other reviews the department is required to perform. These reviews are required before these projects can proceed, and delays in review time hurt our customers, the building community, and our reputation in the building community. Leeds has been so successful recently in bringing new projects to the city and new business parks that engineering depth is essential for us to be able to keep up. It would be my intention to add an entry-level engineer to add depth to that department, and that would come from the general fund. We're asking more and more from our planning department. This year, we added an urban renewal authority to their responsibilities. As we discussed with the compliance and engineering, growth is really keeping them busy. And if you're in the committees, you can see that in just the amount of work that we have in both our planning, our public services committee agendas. It is my intention to hire an additional planner halfway through the fiscal year. Our budget wouldn't allow for the full year, but if we start working on that hire by January 1st, we could fit an additional planner into the budget this year. Last thing I would tell you is Marcia's been with the fire department for decades now. I think we all know who Marcia is, and she's announced her intention to retire in this next year. And what Chief Copper tells me is she's essential to the operations of the fire department. She's the only one who really understands the fire contract and how our firefighters get paid. It's our understanding that it will take, she believes, six months to a year of shadowing Marcia to get control of the contract and all the issues that go along with it. So again, it's my hope with a succession plan to hire Marcia's replacement this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. The last thing I wanted to do was to hire a records technician for the police department. We've taken two positions from that department in the last couple of years. In 2020, our records department processed 12,784 cases. With our 110 sworn officers, this is one tech for every 37 officers. Casper has one tech for every 19 officers. Gillette has one for 13 officers. Laramie, one for every 15 officers. Grand Junction, Colorado, has 114 officers. They have one for every 16, and we're at one for every 37. And what I'm learning is, is our department just can't keep up with the volume of records that they're responsible for. As our revenues come in, I was hoping to hire an additional tech at the cost of $65,000. And I was going to tell you, it wasn't in the budget, but as I told you, good news keeps coming in. And what I learned here just the last couple of days is our bill for the joint communication center with the county will not be as high as we expected. And CRE informed me that we'd overbudgeted for one of their divisions, and so this should give us the necessary funds to fund this position this coming year. So it's my sincere hope that my pessimistic view of our economy for the next year does not come to pass. But if that's the case, I'd love to add back some of the positions we've lost and our departments have been asking for. I would also like to consider adding a cost-of-living raise for our employees. A 3% raise would cost just under $900,000 to the general fund. And I would suggest that we review the budget at the end of December to see how revenues are coming, how they're tracking, how inflationary costs are affecting our budget expenses. And if we can, we'll make those asks then. So I appreciate your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I do have to give a speech at 12:45 to welcome the Wyoming State Mortgage Lenders Association to town, so I need to leave at 12:45, but I'll be here until then.
Thanks, Mayor. And just for the record, Mr. Laborn did join us right shortly after the mayor began his remarks, so thank you, Mr. Laborn, for being here. Jen, look, do we have anybody else online now?
Yes, Councilman Seagrave joined us, as well as, I believe, Councilman Johnson.
Great. So Mr. Johnson and Mr. Seagrave are both on now as well. Thank you, everyone, for making time this afternoon. Any questions for the mayor? As standard practice, a public comment will not be taken at work sessions, but are there questions from council for the mayor regarding his remarks? Hearing none. Treasurer Lockman. And just congratulations in advance for all of the hard work that I know, that all of us know you put in on this, and we really thank you for a well-organized budget that you submit to us every year. So with that, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Chairman. Dr. Aldridge did raise her hand.
Oh, I apologize. Hang on, Treasurer Lockman. Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Chairman White. Through you to Mayor Collins. I was just curious, in looking at the mayor's division proposed budget, I see a $10,000 raise for the chief of staff and $3120 for the public information officer, and then $6720 for the director of constituent services. I'm just curious as to whether that, the 3% increase that you're proposing for all employees would be in addition to this, or would this be outside of that 3% raise?
Ms. Chairman, through you. Dr. Aldridge, there is no 3% raise at this time. It would be my intention at the midpoint of the year to look at our revenues, to see if we believe that our reoccurring revenues would allow for that. And if they do, that would be my intention to add that. I can just tell you that when I hired our chief of staff, you know, I wasn't sure exactly how that was going to work out, but what I've learned is that he's been doing an incredible amount of training of our employees, our directors, our supervisors, and things on top of all the duties that he has as being our chief of staff. He does that for a living, and I'm not sure exactly what it costs, but you know, if we were to hire him for about an hour and a half, I think it cost about $30,000 for his company to do that work for us. And he's doing that for us here, in addition to all of the other duties that he's doing. So I felt like because of the change in what we're expecting of him, that compensation was required. And then when it comes to our chief of constituent services, I would love for anyone to come and sit and listen to all the conversations that she has every day with folks who are upset or concerned with things that are happening in the city and the grace that she handles those people with. It makes a huge difference in, and I think, the way that the city is perceived. And so I think that's how I'd answer your question.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond as well?
Please.
So those raises that Dr. Aldridge mentioned do include the $1.50 an hour. So the public information officer, the $3120, is the raise that was already given by council, as well as part of the chief of staff and the director of constituent services. So 3,120 of that's already a raise that is in effect right now.
I'm sorry, Dr. Aldridge, I didn't understand your question.
Thank you. That really helps.
Any other questions from council? Okay, Treasurer Lockman, now I'll turn the floor over to you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Robin Lockman, and I am the city treasurer. Recently, I spent some time reflecting on the changes to the city's budget over the past three years that I've served as your treasurer. Together, we have faced a number of budgetary challenges and a fair amount of uncertainty. But thankfully, the city of Cheyenne has persevered and is now in a much better financial condition than it was previously. That being said, we do have some challenges ahead of us that I will discuss, including the uncertainty of the U.S. economy. I will then quickly cover sales tax projections and increases to city expenditures. And finally, I will briefly talk about city reserves. First, I would like to echo the mayor's assessment of the challenges facing our economy and how it'll affect our city. As I have been reporting for some time, I am very concerned with the surging inflation levels. The Wyoming Economic Analysis Division produces its own quarterly inflation rates based on data collected, both regionally and statewide. Laramie County is included in the southeast region, along with Albany, Carbon, Goshen, Niobrara, and Platte counties. According to the state's data released on April 22nd, southeast Wyoming's year-over-year fourth-quarter 2021 inflation rate is now in the double digits at 10.2%. This is the highest level we have experienced in over 40 years. I've also been closely following various U.S. economic indicators, and unfortunately, they are signaling that an economic downturn might be on the horizon in the next one to two years. The most closely watched indicator of an impending recession is known as the yield curve. Yield is simply the interest rate earned on bonds, and the yield curve plots those yields of varying maturity levels of bonds. The market's most closely watched portion of the yield curve is the spread between the two and the 10-year yields. Unfortunately, a month ago on April 1st, the yield curve inverted. What a yield curve inversion means in layman's terms is that interest rates on short-term investments are higher than those of long-term investments. As an example, if you are an investor and you are given a choice of investing your money in a CD that's either two years or 10 years at the same exact interest date, you obviously will choose to invest in the two-year CD so that your money is tied up for less time. A yield and curve inversion historically is a sign that investors are expecting a slowing economy, and when a yield curve inverts, a recession historically takes place an average of 12 to 24 months later. Another indication of an impending economic downturn is the shrinking of the gross domestic product or GDP. The GDP is a total monetary value of all goods and services produced during a specific time period. On April 28th, we learned that the U.S. economy unexpectedly shrank 1.4% annually in the first quarter of 2022. This is the first negative quarter for the U.S. economy since the start of the pandemic in 2022, 2020, excuse me. A recession is defined simply as two consecutive negative economic growths. What we don't know right now, however, is if the U.S. does fall into a recession, to what extent Cheyenne will be affected, or even how long it would last. Because of these concerns, the mayor and I were very cautious when determining our sales tax revenue projections. Mayor Collins has already covered most of the significant revenue changes, but I'd like to briefly talk about sales tax. As you know, municipal governments in Wyoming are supported by revenue sources that tend to be extremely unpredictable and volatile because of fluctuations in Wyoming's economy. State sales tax, which is our largest revenue source, is one example of this. There have been some upsides for local governments amid all the recent economic shifts. Inflation does cause hardships, but there is a silver lining. Inflation has also led to a significant increase in sales tax revenues, not only for Laramie County's state sales tax, but also our fifth and sixth penny sales taxes over the past 12 to 15 months, which has led to substantial overages. Since sales taxes are generally attached to prices, consumers paying more for goods means they're paying more in sales taxes. We budgeted $18.7 million in sales tax revenues in the current fiscal year, but I am projecting that we'll end up with almost $24 million this year. This has allowed us to add a significant amount of money to our reserves over the past year. So along with the bad news of inflation, the good news is that sales tax has inflation elasticity, meaning sales tax receipts will generally increase with inflation. As a result, we are seeing our revenues keep pace with our current expenditures thus far. We decided on a sales tax revenue budget of $22 million, which is over $2 million less than what I believe we're going to receive this year. However, with the economy in limbo, we wanted to be very cautious. These estimates are critical. Revenue forecasts that are overly generous result in funding crises when projections are not met, whereas forecasts that are too conservative unnecessarily limit city operations. Next, I will talk about city general fund expenditures budget. Even if we are fortunate and the economy doesn't head into a recession, local governments, including Cheyenne, will continue to contend with the range of fiscal challenges. As I've already mentioned, inflation is at 40-year high, meaning the cost of capital projects and routine service deliveries going up. The tight labor market means governments are having to increase salaries substantially, which in turn puts upward pressures on the ability to pay for other expenses. The mayor has already reported that the total general fund budget has increased $5.7 million. Of that total, $4 million is payroll-related. As you know, our hard-working city staff has also experienced obstacles this year. There are still less employees to do the same amount of work. However, the governing body was forward-thinking by approving a much-needed $1.50 an hour per hour salary increase for our valuable full-time employees. Increasing wages obviously comes at a reoccurring cost. The salary increases in reinstatement of longevity pay will cost nearly $1.7 million annually. This has helped us somewhat to retain and attract employees, although we are still struggling to hire most full-time struggling to hire most full-time positions, such as those that require a CDL, attorneys, engineers, among many others. Just as an example, our cemetery division has an irrigation technician that has been advertised for over 200 days. And Parks is experiencing the same dilemma with their maintenance technicians. We also have multiple vacancies in sanitation, street and alley transit, and fleet maintenance. Our facility maintenance technician has been advertised for 105 days and received very few qualified applicants, two of which didn't even bother to call back when they were trying to schedule an interview. Unfortunately, this happens a lot. During the budget process, we received a $3.6 million in additional requests from our department directors and support agencies that we could not fund in the fiscal year 2023 budget because forecasted revenues did not support them. Most of these requests were to pay for new positions, salary, staff, staff salary increases, staff training, capital expenditures, and newer software. The new position requests that were not funded included 19 full-time and five permanent part-time positions. Just five years ago, the city had 424 full-time equivalents, or FTEs, in the general fund. In comparison, in the proposed 2023 budget, we have 416.4 FTEs. Therefore, we are almost eight FTEs lower than we were five years ago. Also, please keep in mind that five of the 416.4 FTEs are a result of us taking over animal control. So in comparing apples to apples, we really are 14 FTEs lower than we were just five years ago. Yet estimates over that same five-year period show that Cheyenne's population has grown by 2,500 people. Obviously, these FTE decreases affect the level of services that we can provide to our citizens. As I've been reporting to you monthly, department directors and division managers continue to do a fantastic job in keeping expenditures down as much as possible and have worked very, very hard to stay within their budgets, even with the huge cuts they sustained over the past two years. Other non-negotiable expense increases in this budget consist of a higher pension rates, as well as increases in fuel and parts, utilities, and property and liability insurance. First, the legislative mandated pension increases for our firefighters over a four-year period will cost the city an additional $73,000 per year. But thankfully, this is the last year of these legislative increases for our pension. The fleet and parts and fuel budgets were increased substantially due to the inflationary surge of fuel and parts prices. We are estimating a 75% increase in fuel costs compared to fiscal year 2022's budget, which was developed a year ago, and 30% higher in parts prices. This will cost the general fund an additional $414,000. Utilities for our various facilities are also increasing. I have estimated a $71,000 increase to the general fund for natural gas and electricity costs over the next year. Finally, our property and liability insurance premiums are projected to increase 7.5% for liability and 7.9% for property insurance at an additional $80,000 cost to the general fund. Next, I will quickly discuss the city's general fund reserve levels. I want to stress that the city's reserves have vastly improved because of conservative rest, revenue estimates, and the hard work and sacrifice that departments have made over the past two years. As of June 30 of 2020, the city had only 68 days of general fund operating reserves. Through higher revenues and lower expenditures, at the end of April, this amount has grown to 200 days. That being said, Cheyenne continues to have the lowest reserve level compared to other Wyoming cities and Laramie County. You can see the reserve comparison chart that I created on page 45 of the budget book that highlights the reserves of these cities and the county. As you know, per resolution, the current requirement is 60 days of operating reserves. This, again, is the lowest requirement out of all the highest populated cities in Wyoming. As I have stated many times, I believe Cheyenne's goal should be a minimum of 120 days, which we are well above now. I will be working on a resolution in the next couple of months to address changing this minimum reserve level for Cheyenne. I will end with this. Having adequate reserves is critically important. Everyone understands emergencies and unanticipated situations happen all the time. A snowier than predicted winter can rapidly exhaust a city's snow removal budget. Skyrocketing energy costs can overwhelm a planned fuel budget. A large adverse legal settlement or unexpected damage to a city asset or infrastructure can immediately affect the budget and require the use of reserves. Most importantly, though, are the possibility that the economically sensitive revenues, such as sales tax, may decline more than forecasted. This is the largest risk to the city's reserves. That's all I have for now, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions for Treasurer Lockman? Jen?
President.
Yes, Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, through you. Just a quick question. Can you forecast for us what you think will happen with property taxes as some of these large commercial ventures come online?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We don't think that's going to affect this next fiscal year budget because it takes a year for the assessed valuation to be created so that the property taxes will start getting collected for that in the fiscal year 2024 budget. The mayor and I have been talking about this in depth over, you know, the past six months or so, and it's going to be significant. But we'll need to kind of wait to see what those assessed valuations will come in at.
I, I'm sure it will be significant, but it's just going to take time in order to see the
The fruits.
The fruits of the labor, so to speak, yes. Any great question, Mr. Seagrave? Any other questions online, Mike?
Yes, it looks like Councilwoman Aldridge has her hand raised.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes, thank you, Chairman White. I do have a question for Treasurer Lockman. First and foremost, thank you for all your hard work because this, the books that we get each year from you just get better and better and, or maybe I'm just getting better at reading them, but I was curious about, we have the information in our manuals about horse betting, and I was just looking to see, I don't see anything about skilled games. And I know that I've seen reports come from you about skilled games, and I believe that that's what we have voted to put towards recreation expenses. But I'm just wondering if you can point me to the correct page where it has a projected income on skilled games? And I want to make sure that I understand that that does not include the horse off-track horse betting.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Dr. Aldridge. So the skilled-based amusement games is on page 53, but I think you're referring to the lottery proceeds because that was the resolution that was passed by the governing body. But if you look in the intergovernmental revenue, which is the second section, about halfway down, you'll see lottery proceeds at $325,000. And right below that is skilled-based amusement games for $80,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Going once?
Mr. Chair, through you.
Mr. Escobal.
No questions, just a comment, and thank you for the great job you did on this booklet as well. I guess we can look at the glass half-full or half-empty, however you choose, but I was just surprised that when we did get up to over 200 days on operating reserves, the graph that you did provide us showed on page 45 how well some of the other cities are doing. So I guess we have more work to do there, obviously. Thanks for sharing with us what the other two businesses that are going to have horse racing in them, that increase as well, the 626,000. I guess that's another thing that we should look at going forward. And yeah, you, you're pretty much stuck. When I looked at the other graph at the beginning, when it showed the top 10 revenue sources, I think all but three of them were beyond our control. And when people ask, you know, they travel to other communities and they say, why are the facilities so much better in these communities? Why are the roads so much better in these communities? The quality of life better? It just comes down to a philosophical belief at the state level that, you know, when people run for office, they run on, you know, they promised to not increase taxes. You know, you'll actually get a fancy envelope in the mail from Grover Nordquist, the taxpayers' pledge, I think is what it's called. And a lot of candidates don't really think twice before they sign it. And then they'll go off and end up on the revenue committee at the state, and then a good idea comes up and they, you ask them at the end of the meeting why they didn't vote for it. They said, well, I signed a pledge. You know, and, and that's some of the dilemmas we're facing. So a lot of it's going to be education with our legislative leaders, and hopefully they'll make the decisions up there that they see are affecting us at this level. It's been really eye-opening for me, you know, the last four years to serve on city council, having been at that level, and really not understanding, you know, how these city budgets are so constrained and difficult. So my compliments to both you and your staff on the great job you did with the resources you, you have available to you. Thank you.
Robin, were you going to make a, I saw you kind of put your head up there and indicate that you wanted to make a comment?
Just to quickly, back to your comment on general fund reserves. My personal belief is, I mean, some of these general fund reserves are more than a year and a half, and so to me, that's, it's, it's almost too much. I mean, there's a fine balance between having enough general fund reserves to protect you in an emergency type of situations, but then not hoarding money that we could be used to serve our citizens as well. So.
I agree, and I'm very happy that we're beyond the days of 60 days in reserves.
You and I both.
Quite, quite a difference. There are no other questions from council? Anyone online, Mike?
Councilman White, I am not seeing anybody with a raised hand or question.
Great. Well, I'll thank you, Mayor, and you, Treasurer Lockman, for your hard work, and all the department directors who we'll be hearing from in the next several days. And we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll pick it back up tomorrow at noon. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.